Madam Clerk.
Board of Commissioners, Public Meeting, Tuesday, February 17, 2015. The time is now 7:49. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, notice of this meeting was published in December 11, 2014, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and the Herald News. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Mayor Pacheco?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you. We are gonna move our agenda around a little bit to honor our good friend Phil White. We're sorry to keep you guys waiting for a few minutes. I have a proclamation and then our clerk will read a letter into the record from Walt Smith that he sent because he couldn't make it. So I will start with my proclamation. Whereas Philip Remington White was born on a tobacco farm in Windsor, Connecticut, and moved to New Jersey when he was in grade school. And whereas Phil's interest in writing began when he was volunteered to write two paragraph story for his high school newspaper and then became its editor. And when in college, became the news editor at Rutgers University, the Daily Targon. And whereas after college, Phil worked as a writer for various news organizations until finally becoming editor of the Nutley Sun. And whereas Phil's enthusiasm as the editor at the Nutley Sun soon led to his interest in becoming involved in many Nutley organizations and clubs and consequently volunteered his time to numerous events. And whereas after being an active participant in Nutley's happenings, Phil reorganized -- I'm sorry. Phil -- excuse me. Whereas after being an active participant in Nutley happenings, Phil recognized the need for an interactive news forum and created NJ Hometown, covering Nutley government, schools, sports, and clubs. And whereas Phil soon became the go-to person for local news coverage and information and selfishly spent countless hours ensuring the Nutley residents were kept abreast of the latest news in Nutley. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County Vestas, State of New Jersey, that as the tenure of NJ Hometown ends, Phil White be recognized with appreciation and gratitude for his dedication and commitment to the Township of Nutley and be forever regarded as a true friend to our town. As we all know, we do not need a vote for a proclamation. I will start off with Commissioner Scarpelli to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Phil, congratulations on your retirement. You're one of the few people that I can talk to that goes back -- you know, I've known you for over 40 years. You've covered all three of my grandfather's campaigns, you've covered my father's 24 years as Commissioner/Mayor, and now you're covering seven years that I've been here. And when I talk to you and we reflect about some of those days in the past, it's always with a sense of pride that I hear some of those stories about the days gone by. And I think you should also be recognized, not only for what you've done professionally through the Nutley Sun and NJ Hometown, but also, you know, you're community active -- you've been community active in Nutley. You've, you know, been involved with the J.C.'s and the Distinguished Service Awards, the Matia Award. It's just a testament of your community volunteerism here in Nutley. And I just hope you have a great retirement and God bless.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Phil, I'm a bit under the weather this evening, which figured it gave me the incentive to do a little bit of role reversal. I knew you'd be in a suit and tie, so I figured I'd come casually for the evening. What I was thinking about today, and I'm here because I didn't want to miss this, it's too important to recognize, one, your passion for journalism. You're also, to me, a pioneer because actually starting NJ Hometown many years ago with a social aspect to it, a message board, which actually became an interactive social site. You were thinking about how you potentially increased the ability for people to communicate, to share their points of view, do it in a fair way. And in establishing it, you actually held to the tenants that were honorable because you wanted a place where people can debate honestly, debate openly. And anytime it got out of bounds, you were quick to fix it. And I think that took courage as well. You've been active in the town for a very long time. You were always a part of the town. And for me, I just want to, one, recognize your achievement. I encourage you to be as proud as you possibly can be because of what you were able to accomplish and note that it has had an impact on this town. It will be missed, and I'll miss you, but most importantly, as you move into retirement, I wish you all the best and want you to enjoy it, celebrate, and go out and do some things that just give you a whole bunch of fun. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you. Commissioner Tucci?
Well, Phil, first of all, you don't look old enough to retire. That's the first thing I want to say. The second thing is, I just want to thank you for all the service you've given this town over the years. You've been a man right along of integrity, of honor. You're a great investigative reporter. You get to the heart of issues. You reported them without a bias, and you always gave people the real deal. And the people of Nutley are going to be at a loss moving forward without your input. But those of us who have had the good fortune to have been exposed to your articles and your writings and your visions and Hometown and everything else that you've done over the years and all the service organizations, which are way too many for me to mention here tonight, you're just a very unique individual, someone that's going to be missed. And all I want to say from the bottom of my heart is, thank you for everything that you've done and don't think you're gonna get away because we're still gonna call you every now and then.
Thank you. And Phil, I would just like to add a few words myself. I have to say, at the very beginning, I didn't think you liked me too much, you know? I can remember you coming to some of my campaign fundraisers and it was this a little awkward for me. At first, I was like, who's this guy taking pictures in the room? Because I didn't know you. And I have to tell you, life is really strange because I really think of you as one of my family members now. And you were always fair to everyone on this board and the news that you wrote, and it's really honorable. I especially liked all the older stories that you told me in person, sometimes on the phone, about the Orequios in Florida and baseball and all that stuff. I can remember seeing you everywhere in Nutley, you know, a lot of the baseball fields which my kids participated in. You always made sure you, you know, came up to me and you were a true gentleman. And I have to tell you, you know, I already missed the news page being up there. I have to tell you, it's like the automatic first thing. I know I do, I don't know if everybody else does it, but it's like I seem like I run to my computer and click on that page and I'm wondering where the news is. So if you get bored in your retirement, you know that you could always come back to Nutley and start that page up again because we all already miss it. So I just really want to thank you for being a friend to me most of all. Your friendship means the world to me, and if there's anything I or this board could do for you in the future, you could always count on us because Nutley is really losing someone who knows about volunteerism, somebody that knows how to get involved in the community, and somebody that really gives back to the community. So I really thank you from the bottom of my heart. Phil, you're a good friend. Before we continue, I would like our clerk just to read the letter that Commissioner Walt Smith wrote because unfortunately, he couldn't be here. And then we're gonna actually take some public comment. If anyone would like to say a few words for Phil, and then at the end of that, we're gonna give you a chance to speak, Phil.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Phil, this is from Walt Smith. Dear Phil, congratulations, your lifetime of service to Nutley. I apologize for not being at the commission meeting tonight, but I am at an organizational meeting for the 2015 Scouting for Food Drive. We go back a long time. We first met in June 1967 at the bar behind Ralph's. I don't remember the name at the time, could have been Maggie's Garter. But Ray Greenly, Joe Nadler, you and I met over pizza and beer to discuss publicity in the Nutley Sun for the Nutley J.C.'s. From there, we went on the Annie Oakley Day Project that summer in the Park Oval. That was an experience over 48 years we have passed since then. You were never just an editor or reporter, but were always involved in Nutley and cared about Nutley. You did everything in your power to announce and promote all kinds of volunteer activities in this town. Your decision was -- your dedication was and is incredible. I remember meeting you with you on more than one occasion at 2:00 a.m. in the morning in the basement of the Nutley Sun to write up the release, to announce the J.C.'s Distinguished Service Awards in the paper the next day. We will miss NJ Hometown. It was the singular most important way of communicating Nutley activities to the people in the town and also to thousands of former Nutleyites all over the country. I hope someone someday steps up to try to fill your unfulfillable shoes. I want to take -- I want to thank you for all you have done for our community over the years. Nutley will never be the same without you actively participating with the volunteer work that takes place here. You have helped make Nutley the special place that it is. It has been a privilege to be your friend. May that continue for many years in the future. See you at the DSA judging. Sincerely, Walt Smith, former Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to say a few words? Mayor Scarpelli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. I really feel honored that you invited me here this evening. I said to my wife as I left the door tonight, "Man, I'm glad." I don't miss it at all, I said. You know, 25 years, I had to take a shower and shave, put on a suit, make a meeting. And it was like a little chore today to come down the stairs and get in my car. But I'm here tonight especially for Phil White. First time I walked into this room, I came to this room for a variety, it's about 45 years ago, and Phil White covered the story. And that's when we first met. Frank Orequio brought Phil White to edit the Nutley Sun. He'll spend more time in this room than anyone else in the world. He was only here for town meetings, but he pulled his hair from the planning board, Board of Adjustment, Planning Board, on and on, and every other function in Nutley. He started at the Nutley Sun, then he ran the television program for Frank Orequio OBC, and then Nutley Hometown. Phil has brought, has been probably the town crier for over 50 years. It's my pleasure to stand here and honor Phil White for his service to the community. And Phil, on your retirement, I want to wish you all the luck in the world and stay healthy, my friend. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Judge Caciola?
Mayor, Commissioners, evening. How often do we, as elected -- I'll throw myself back in just for a minute. How often do we, as elected officials, ever -- something this wonderful to say about a member of the media? I think it's a rarity. That is because Phil has been our friend, fair and accurate reporting for many, many years, but also a friend to every one of us. I think he knows us better than many other people do. He knows our lives, he knows about us personally and about us professionally. He's done a wonderful job for all of us in reporting for many, many years. And I have known Phil since I'm probably about this big, hanging on my father's, following my father around, to all of the events that he went to. So he's been a part of my life for a long time. Thank you for your friendship. I thank you for the honor of allowing me to introduce you at the Matia Dinner. That was a great honor for me. I wish you nothing but health and happiness for the rest of your life. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Sam Bataglia, mind my voice. I know Phil since I was this big. The words have been said. I know there are two people that are gonna miss Phil, Sarah and Rory. I can say that I've known the gentleman since I first decided to run for the Board of Ed. He then labeled me years later as heavy-handed gavel president. That stood with me for four years. But Phil's a special guy, and he's done a lot of great things for this community. And there haven't been too many people that have been given an honor like that. Glad to be here, to wish him well, and you have the privilege to say, "I'm a tired businessman living on a pension."
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to comment? Seeing no one, Phil, would you like to say a few words, please?
I'm Phil.
Please come up to the mic.
I don't know if I should be addressing the --
Do you want to state your name for the record?
People who are here. But it's been a wonderful experience for me to be here. I can remember first coming to Nutley. I can remember -- we mentioned Frank Orequio was a major part of my early life. I can tell you a really interesting story about Frank. I was -- worked for him for a while until I was drafted. And I got -- I ended up, I don't know why, but I had a pretty good job while I was in the Army. I did go through basic training, though. I mean, I did okay. As a matter of fact, I was -- I shot the best -- what do they call it?
Score with the rifle?
With the rifle. I got the top score, you know? That was the last time, though, I ever handled a gun. I ended up doing special projects for the Army, one of which was assigned to the National Convention that nominated Mary Goldwater for President out in San Francisco. Without explaining the details, I ended up, one morning, on the floor of the convention -- one of the entrances to the commission, to the seedings. But this was early in the morning, and there was a demonstration going on. And I was down on the floor demonstrating. I forgot what I was doing. We were a bunch of crazy kids. When one morning, somebody walked by and almost stepped on me, and I looked up and it was Frank Orequio. And he said, "Phil?" And I went like this. And I went by and I says, "I'll meet you," and I forgot where I am, "in half an hour or someplace." And so I met Frank there. We had a good conversation, you know, couldn't go into all the details, but one of the things I was able to do was to get him an unrestricted pass to the convention so that this is Goldwater, he could go wherever he wanted to go, you know? And in return, he got me a car to use for while I was out there for the convention. And made me promise that when I got done with the service that I would come back to Nutley. Well, I hadn't been working for him in Nutley. I was working in some of the other papers. And when I came back to Nutley, he was happy and he said, "I have papers in Florida and Carolinas and all over the place." He says, "Take your pick. You can pick any place you want and be the editor of the paper." And I didn't have to think very long before realizing that the only paper he really cared about was the Nutley Sun. So I said, "How about the Nutley Sun?" Well, he was taken back by it, but during the same session, he promised me the job as editor of the Nutley Sun. And that's how I began my career in Nutley. Before that, I had been in other papers, in New Jersey, in Little Falls, and --
Sure.
-- Pompton Lakes and whatnot. So it's been a wonderful, a wonderful experience, a long association with the town and like I know you guys, like my brother. Oh, my brother is here incidentally.
Please introduce him.
Yes, my brother Albert.
Welcome, Albert. Thank you for coming tonight. It's a pleasure to have you here.
And he's looking after me now, too. I intend to continue participating in some of the major activities. Sam Corella, we're already working on the Hall of Fame and some of those other. I really appreciate all the comments that you've made. I sincerely, really have enjoyed working with you. I want to say that you're the best group of commissioners ever, but I mean, I guess I could say that about all of them, but like, it's really been a lot of fun. They not only work with you on problems, but also they work with you when things were good and we were having a good time and enjoying the wonderful activities and people in our town in Nutley. So thanks again.
Thank you so much, Phil.
So can we take a picture?
I didn't bring my camera.
That's okay.
We will take a little break if anyone wants to exit before we get on with our business portion of the meeting. We'll give you a moment. What do I do with my glasses?
We look a little like --
Well, that goes your way.
Step down. I would have to leave. Take yours. Hey? Oh, you wanna do that for us?
Seema, if you stick around 50 years.
Thank you, Phil. One more round of applause on his way out. Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, I see we have minutes.
Yes, Mayor, we have executive session minutes for November 6, 2014, November 25, 2014, December 2, 2014, December 16, 2014, January 6, 2015, and January 20, 2015. I need a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
I vote yes on all except January 20, 2015 are abstained.
We're just doing executive session first.
Okay.
Okay, so yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Tucci?
We're doing the first executive session?
We're doing the --
Or we're doing all the executive?
All the executive session.
Okay, so I'll vote yes with the exception of the executive session of November 6, 2014.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Yes, with the exception of December 2, 2014.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
We also have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for January 20, 2015. I need a motion.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Seeing.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Is that all the minutes, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Okay, I see we have communications and correspondence.
Yes, we have the -- the Chamber of Commerce has submitted an event application to host a 5K run at the Nutley Park Oval on Sunday, May 3, 2015, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The Nutley Elks Lodge has submitted a Sunday letter for a daily pull tab raffle taking place, it's starting January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2015.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The Rotary Club of Nutley has submitted a social fare permit to host a beefsteak tricky tray on March 28, 2015.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Enterprise Rent-A-Car is requesting permission for a one-day social, one-day special car sale on Saturday, May 2, 2015, at proponent federal credit, 536 Washington Avenue in Nutley.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The Friends of
Aye.
The Friends of Phoenix Center Foundation, Inc. has submitted a social fair permit to host an event at 16 months Senior Owens Place on May 1, 2015.
Move it, second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Evans?
I'm sorry, aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
The Franklin Steakhouse has submitted an event application for the Nutley St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 7, 2015.
Move it, second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to reports please.
Yes, I have a shade report Mayor for the month of January 2015.
Thank you, move on to bills please.
Yes Mayor, Public Affairs, $186,186.21. Revenue and Finance, $7,186,197.98. Public Safety, $86,160.35. Public Works, $155,198.9. Parks and Public Property, $255,070.91. Total Payroll is $838,489.13 for a grand total of $8,707,302.67.
Move the bills, second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Thank you, we'll move on to resolutions now, Commissioner Tucci.
Whereas Level 3 Communications LLC has been approved by the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities to provide local exchange and inter-exchange telecommunications services throughout the state of New Jersey by order of approved docket number TE 971-20913 dated October 20, 1998. Whereas Level 3 Communications LLC proposes to place its telecommunications facilities arrely on existing utility poles or an underground conduit and public rights-of-way with the municipality for the purposes of providing such services. And whereas the municipality and Level 3 Communications have agreed to a set of terms and conditions that are acceptable to both parties and are contained in a specific right-of-way use agreement, and whereas the consent herein is for non-exclusive use of public rights-of-way with the municipality for the purpose of owning, constructing, installing, operating, and maintaining a telecommunications system, and whereas the consent granted herein will expire 25 years from the effective date of this agreement, and whereas Level 3 Communications agrees to indemnify the municipality as set forth in the agreement, particularly Section 9, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute said right-of-way use agreement with Level 3 for the specific purpose of granting a non-exclusive public right-of-way for the existing utility poles or underground conduit in order to allow Level 3 to provide its telecommunications service. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas sealed bids were received for the Department of Public Works Garage Roof Replacement Phase 1, and whereas Dascal LLC, 21 Stevens Road, Unit 210, Wallington, New Jersey was a low bidder at a base bid of $86,900, and whereas the township has received six bids for the Department of Public Works Garage Roof Replacement Phase 1, the lowest being an amount of $86,900 from Dascal LLC, and whereas funds are available from capital ordinance number 3242A and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer upon adoption of the 2015 municipal budget, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for the Department of Public Works Garage Roof Replacement Phase 1 will be awarded to Dascal LLC, 21 Stevens Road, Unit 210, Wallington, New Jersey. If I could just back up for a moment, upon adoption of the 2015 municipal budget for another phase and existing capital dollars in the 2014 budget, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
That's all I have Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund permit fees in the amount of $229 to Bloomfield Cooling and Heating, 127 Patterson Avenue in Little Falls for a double payment of permit number 42824 at 46 Hope Street, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of property taxes for Block 8902, Lot 12 for $2,371.20, Block 301, Lot 6 for $3,188.06, for a total refund amount of $5,559.26, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas the tax collector of this municipality has previously issued tax sales certificates to U.S. Bank Custodian for TLCF 2012 ALC for the following blocks and lot, Block 2304, Lot 5, for the amount of $344.62. Whereas the purchaser of the aforementioned said sales certificate has indicated to the tax collector that they have lost or otherwise misplaced the original tax sales certificate and have duly filed the appropriate affidavit of loss to the tax collector, now therefore be resolved by the, be resolved that the tax collector of the municipality be and she is hereby authorized upon receipt of the appropriately executed and notarized loss affidavit and payment of a fee of $100 per certificate to issue appropriate duplicate tax sales certificate to the said purchaser covering certificate lost as previously described, all in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 99 of Public Laws, 1997. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution and a loss affidavit be attached to a duplicate certificate to be issued to said purchaser and said duplicate certificate shall be stamped or otherwise have imprinted upon it the word duplicate as required by law, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has the need to retain the services of an attorney who specializes in municipal land use law and policy to provide legal advice and services to the code enforcement department in connection with the township's land use policies and procedures. Whereas NJSA 48:11-51AI permits the award of a contract without public bidding, and whereas Angelo Sefeli Esquire of the law firm of Pyros Enes Sefeli Paris in Genotempo, 360 Passaic Avenue in Nutley, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal in the amount not to exceed $15,500. Now, whereas the funds are available in account 501-226-205 and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer upon adoption of the 2015 municipal budget, and whereas the term of this contract is effective January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2015, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Angelo Sefeli Esquire of the law firm of Pyros Enes Sefeli Paris in Genotempo as a professional service. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution as well as the contract shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and a notice in accordance with local public contracts law of New Jersey in the form attached heretofore shall be published in the Nutley Sun, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarpelli please.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund $700 to Sordoni Construction, 409 Main Street, Chester, New Jersey, for a refund payment for water hydrant usage, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund $1,000 to Danny Chang, 540 Passaic Avenue in Nutley, New Jersey, for a refund payment for road opening services, move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of professional engineers to assist the township with defending itself against a tort claim made by Hoffmann Roche and other environmental issues as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944A 20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate, whereas the Chief Financial Officer has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for January 1, 2015 to December 31, 2015 will not exceed $75,000. And whereas Hatchmont McDonald, 111 Woody Avenue, South Islip, New Jersey, has submitted an acceptance proposal to provide such professional service as required to assist the township attorney in responding to the claim made by Hoffmann Roche and other environmental issues. Such services will be billed monthly in actual time and expenses incurred in accordance with their submitted fee schedule. Whereas Hatchmont McDonald Services will be coordinated and managed by John Rolack Jr., PE, Principal of the firm with 35 years of experience, and Roy Redman, LSRP, New Jersey, with 30 years of experience. And whereas Hatchmont McDonald Professional Engineering Services has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certificate which certifies that they have not made any reportable contribution to a political candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions to determine the contract. Whereas funds are available from account number 501-226-229, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer and certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract according with NJSA 1944A 20.4 or 20.5 with Hatchmont McDonald Professional Engineering Services for the proposal as stated above. Be it further resolved that the business entity certificate and determination of value be placed on the file with this resolution, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
I just wanted to clarify, this is a 2015 resolution, we have not adopted the 2015 budget yet, so I think just a minor clarification on the wording, funds are available in 501-226-299 and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer on the adoption of our budget, I think it's just clarification of the wording. Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas bids for the 2014-2015 acceptance of recycling vegetative waste to include leaf and grass clippings were received and opened on November 12, 2014. Whereas S. Rotundi &amp; Sons, Inc., PO Box 1407 Summit, New Jersey, was a low bidder for the removal and recycling of Class B clean wood brush in the amount of $6 per cubic yard, for the removal and recycling of Class C leaves in the amount of $7.95 per cubic yard, and for the removal and recycling of Class C grass clippings in the amount of $13.95 per cubic yard. Whereas change order number one has been authorized from account number 501-422-209 of the original contract in the amount of $61,000 to reduce to the amount of $6,500 for a total contract price of $54,500. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, change order number one is attached as a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with S. Rotundi &amp; Sons for the project known as 2014-2015 Acceptance of Recycling Vegetative Waste to Include Leaf and Grass Clippings are hereby authorized and approved, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Resolution 5915 has been pulled and will be, we'll pass that at the next, that's all I have Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner Scarpelli. Commissioner Rogers, you have nothing this evening?
Nothing Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Whereas raffle applications have been reviewed, received from the following organization, MBPOE, Number 1290 Nutley Lodge, License Number 05-15 for January 1, 2015 to December 31, 2015. PTL Ratcliffe School, License Number 06-15 for a tricky tray, March 27, 2015. PTL Raffles, Ratcliffe School, License Number 07-15 on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, March 27, 2015. Rotary Club of Nutley, License Number 08-15 on-premise tricky tray, March 28, 2015. Shelter Love Events, Inc., License Number 09-15 on-premise merchandise raffle, March 14, 2015. Shelter Love Events, Inc., License Number 10-15 on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, March 14, 2015. Friends of the Phoenix Foundation, Inc., for the Phoenix Center, Inc., License Number 11-15 for casino night, May 1, 2015. Friends of the Phoenix Foundation, Inc., License Number 12-15 on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, May 1, 2015. Essex City, I'm sorry, Essex County PBA Conference Scholarship Fund, Inc., License Number 13-15 off-premise super 50/50 cash raffle, November 20, 2015. Nutley Music Booster Association's License Number 14-15 on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, April 4, 2015. Nutley Music Booster Association's License Number 14-15 on-premise merchandise raffle, April 4, 2015. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the license, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
Whereas an application has been filed for a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of planetary retail consumption, License Number 0716-32-020-011, Park Place Pizza, TA, Terazza's Restaurant, issued to GLO Group LLC, TA, Bella Luces, for premises located at 507 Franklin Avenue in Nutley, New Jersey, and whereas the submitted application from his form is completed in all respects, the transfer fees have been paid, and the license has been properly renewed for the current license term, and whereas the applicant is qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by Title 33 of the New Jersey statutes, as well as the applicable ordinances and conditions consistent with Title 33. And whereas the applicant has disclosed, and Nutley, and the Nutley Police Department has reviewed, the source of all funds used in the purchase of the license and the licensed business and all additional financing obtained in connection with the licensed business, and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners does hereby approve the transfer to the aforementioned said person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of planetary retail consumption license number 0716-32-020-011, Park Place Pizza, TA, Terazza's Restaurant, issued to GLO, GLO Group LLC, TA, Bella Luces, for premise located at 507 Franklin Avenue in Nutley, New Jersey, 07110, and be it further resolved, the Nutley Board of Commissioners does hereby direct the Municipal Clerk to endorse the license certificate to the new ownership as follows, this license subject to all its terms and conditions is hereby transferred to GLO Group LLC, TA, Bella Luces, effective February 18, 2015, and that the one copy of said resolution be sent to the State of New Jersey Office of Attorney General, Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye, I wish you a lot of luck with this license, we happen to have the same address, but my address is 507 Bloomfield Ave, so good luck to you guys, an aye on that.
That concludes our business portion of the meeting, is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Mayor, I have one comment if I might take a moment.
Absolutely.
Not looking to prolong this meeting any longer than we need to. Because of a family emergency, I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting when we had our dignitaries for our St. Patrick's Day Parade, so I just want to publicly congratulate our Grand Marshal for this year, Chuck Omara, who's a great guy and a longtime Nutley resident, Ann Morris, our Deputy Grand Marshal, our Parade Queen, Deondra Kelly. The Kelly family is iconic here in Nutley, no need to say anything else about that. Our Member of the Year, Joe Milbauer, and our First Fireman of the Year, John Redstone. I'd just like to publicly congratulate them and tell them that I look forward to marching down Franklin Avenue with them. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, any other comments? Anyone again would like to address their Board of Commissioners, seeing no one, we need a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor Pacheco?
Aye.
And the time is now 8:38.